All right.
Congratulations to the fighting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I think Levi will be here, he's just running a little late. I'd like to welcome everybody. This is a time in the agenda, we have time for public input. I don't think we have, do we? You have somebody? Oh, you had something. So you basically have three minutes to address the board on items. So I'll give you time right now.
Well, board members, I wanted to take this time to remind you why you're here. I believe it's for supporting the education of children in a healthy way. And I know you have elected a new superintendent. That will be the direction this school district goes in. I hope you take your task to heart and remember the focus going forward is to promote good learning for the children in this district. Our children are important in a godly way as they are the next generation. Hopefully, they will be good stewards of humanity when they come into the workforce based on how they are educated. The way they are educated and treated while in this school district has a large effect on their mentality. God sees what we all do all the time, whether it's good or evil. And you have the choice to consider this when you're voting on issues that affect the children in this school district. Do what is right for the children as you are the gatekeepers of their future and eventually your own future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you know others that are wanting to speak tonight? We will consider that item closed under the consent agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? So the agenda is as presented and under the consent agenda, we have minutes from last meeting, reports of finances, claims, waivers, other things such as that. Is there a motion to out the consent agenda?
Yes.
Oh, Chris makes motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Dustin is second at that. Any discussion? Are you none of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those both, motion carried. We will move on to new and old business. Do you want to talk about teacher appreciation? I did see we have the thank you card for some of the teachers. Anything else you want to say about teacher appreciation?
It's just posted up on the board packet, what we put together for the teachers and for all the staff members this week. Just showing gratitude for everything that they've done throughout the school year, not only during the school day, but outside the school day to support education, support our kids, support our families going forward. So we appreciate everything that they've done, all teachers and staff members.
Well, I think saving the board, we really do appreciate the teachers and staff that we do have. Like as was stated, the role that the teachers play in the lives of our students and in their futures is really not even measurable. So I'd like to reiterate, you know, our thank you to the teachers for what they do. Any, I don't know if anybody had any comments, but... Not, is there other old business? I don't have anything else. We will move on to principal reports. I hope everybody had a chance to look at them. I think we even have any principal, oh, we do have a principal here, there's one hiding back there. Anybody want to say anything about their questions about the principal reports? Kind of a short timer back there. Welcome to your teacher endeavors as you move on to new fields. So are you excited about your new?
Yeah, I am. I am.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about any of the principal reports?
All right, did anybody say anything?
I was talking to her about her new, thanking her for her time here. I don't think anybody else had any questions.
Just a couple of highlights to talk a little bit about. And this in right did have a nice report ready to go and I asked her to pull back a little bit. Because what will happen in the month of June is we should have all the data that should be coming in that we can share. Remember that you can't share everything with smarter balance testing because some of the information is embargoed until typically September. But we will have information that we'll share out in June. They'll go through and give you preliminary scores of how our kids have done on smarter balance. I also want to share, and this is why I walked out of the room for, because I forgot that Lindsay gave this, or Mrs. Bachman gave this to me. But I wanted to also recognize Elsie Larson. Elsie was selected as a 2025 individual for our school district, representing our school district at the 2025 Academic Excellence Banquet, put on by ASBSD, where she received her, I think a plaque from Governor Larry Roden. So congratulations to Elsie on receiving that. Job well done.
Anything else there? We'll move on to resignations. We have a list of resignations, you had a, you have the list here.
Okay, so the resignations I'm asking to approve tonight would be Josh Henderson as assistant football coach, Carrie Stroder, co-yearbook advisor, Kristi Moser, co-yearbook advisor, Jennifer Ganger, Freeman Davis admin assistant, Jody Clu, girls' coach, golf coach, Kaylee Shider, I believe, assistant cook, Nathan Seibert as middle school football coach, and Wadonna Melkey as social studies teacher in the middle school.
All right, is there a motion to accept those resignations? All right, I have motion. Reed, is there a second? Charles? Any discussion, questions about those? Are you none of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those both, motion carried. We need to advertise for those two also.
Yeah, you would for the coaching and teaching positions, yes.
All right, do we have a motion to advertise for those positions?
That's a move.
Here's a second.
Second.
Second from Levi. Any questions, discussion? All right, so all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have some contracts to approve. You had a list of the contracts we need to approve.
Okay, so the contracts that need to be approved tonight would be Don Epson for the CTE Culinary Arts Program and more. It's not just going to be culinary arts. We have Kyle Falk, he will be our new AD in middle school math interventionist slash teacher. And then we have Angela Falk, who will be assistant principal.
Is there a motion to accept those contracts? So Travis, is there a second? Second from Levi. Any discussion on that motion? Kyle, one, good.
Falk, yes.
All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those both, motion's approved. Item number seven is approve the TeachWell Solutions contract. The new contract is in our materials.
The next two items are dealing with service contracts. You know, a service contract with TeachWell Solutions, and that is for our school site. And that's a service for 80 days in our district. And at times also they go above that, just charge it off for daily, but it's a $52,400 contract. That'd be the first one.
Now, is it a $2,400 increase from last year, it looked like?
They did pretty close to over. Same close of that.
You know, it's, it usually is, but it just depends upon honestly the mobility of the kids coming in and out of the district, so.
They're okay with extra days?
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to approve that contract? Chris, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions about it? Any more questions? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those both, motion's carried. I have item number eight, which is discussion approval of the school health nurse contract and amendment.
That's how the contract reads. Amendment to reach an outsourcing therapy contract. So the service contracts are basically the same as previous years. And the administration did want to share that they are very pleased with services that are offered by Mulbridge Regional Hospital and Clinic. Outsourcing therapy contract went from 106 to 109. And the nursing contract went from $40.46 an hour to $51.97 an hour. So with that, 50?
50.
50, yeah.
It went from 50.46 to 51.97.
I'll recuse myself for this.
Recuse yourself?
Like a motion to approve those contracts.
Okay, a motion from Dustin to approve those contracts. Chris is going to second it. And Dr. Anderson was going to recuse himself, said, record here. Any discussion, questions? Not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those both, motion's carried. We have some election ballots for the high school athletic association. They're in there, I don't know, do you have recommendations on any of these?
Did you guys read through all of them?
I looked through them.
All right, what's up first is amendment ballots, is that right?
And the small school representative was the next one intended here.
Yeah, the amendment was on this, I guess.
Okay, so with the ballots, the first one that you have is looking at the Small School Board of Education Representative, and there's only one that is Billy, a client from Harding County. So I take it we're going to support Billy? Okay, sounds good. Yeah. The next one is an East River At-Large Representative. You know, I know basically all these people on this are all good people. I think that, you know, looking at the person with probably the most experience is Ryan Rollinger from Harrisburg School District. He's been involved all the way back to even as a young man, as a participant. But really, all of them are good candidates. It's totally up to you on this one.
No, anyone stood out over the other ones? Any thoughts or motions?
I would probably just, your recommendation myself, but... Why don't we go with your recommendation there?
Do you want to do an individual motion for each or do you want to go at the end?
Okay, we'll just do them all at the end, just to ask approved, so. All right, Ryan?
Then we have At-Large.
And then, yeah, and the next one is Division One Representative. Again, both guys are good guys. I would recommend that you go with Jordan Fowler just because of the West River. And then with us, we deal with some of the different issues because of our vocation with travel.
Go ahead with that. And then there's the Division Three Room.
Go by that one. Yep. This is the one I, I would recommend you go with Chad Ellison from Lennox High School.
Yeah.
That sound all right?
There's not an agreement, I guess. That's the last one of those, right?
Yep.
Why don't we have a motion to approve those recommendations as stated? Somebody want to make that motion?
Second.
Second from Travis over there, to approve them as we just went through. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those both, motion's carried. Now we have the official amendment ballot.
Okay, so first of all, I'm going through these and actually going through them a couple of different times. I'm going to tell you that all amendments are very good amendments that need to be put in place. The First Amendment, amendment number one is giving clarification on semesters and trimesters. There's some school districts that have trimesters. And of course, what you have to start seeing happen is schools will try to take advantage of it, where this clarifies eligibility based off of both semester and trimester. So just a change in the language to keep everything balanced with amendment one. Amendment number two, this is the one that again, it's semesters, trimesters, but now they're addressing middle school, specifically at middle school is seventh and eighth. Sometimes we get confused thinking our sixth graders can participate at high school level, they cannot. The other thing I like about this amendment, I believe it's this one, let me check real quick, yes it is, is that it's also stating that you only have two years to do this in middle school. What I mean is to participate at the high school level, you only get two years. Because what's happening, and I don't know if we see it much here, but I know I've heard it's happened, is that you'll have parents that will have their kids play out their seventh grade year and then their eighth grade year. And then they say, oh, I'm going to redshirt them for eighth grade, hold them back, so that they can get another year of playing time before they jump into varsity. This only allows them to do that for two years, so again, it clarifies it. Questions with that? Probably a good amendment. And then amendment number three. This is an amendment that just clarifies again, something we don't see that much here, but you get to the bigger cities like probably Rapid City, Sioux Falls, Aberdeen, you'll have situations where you'll have kids that, especially like in Sioux Falls, where they just move from one, one address here, they bounce to the other side of the street, and they're here, and it gives clarification as far as their eligibility. Remember, as long as they stay in that school district that they started in, so even though mom and dad may move across the street, now let's say they're in, you know, Sioux Falls Roosevelt District, they still are eligible to participate in Sioux Falls Jefferson, where they started at, right? But they can't do this, go across the street, and then all of a sudden start also participating with Jefferson. That's actually considered a move of residence. All right, so that gives clarification on that amendment. And then amendment number four was dealing with calendar dates. There's issues because of three, or excuse me, four-day calendars and also because of five-day calendars, how many days a kid would actually have to set out. And they just clarified now instead of saying it's a, it's going to be this for four-day school year or school. This is for five years now, it's just set by a calendar number of days, so it's going to be equal for all. The other thing with this amendment, double check something, let me put it. This also is one that when a student starts in the fall of the year, again, I don't think this has happened much here, but they start football, cross-country, volleyball, and the season starts, let's say seven days before the school year starts. Once they start going to those practices, that eligibility kicks in. So what has been happening is that kids will go in, they'll try out for a football team, volleyball team, cross-country team, and they don't like the coach, they don't like the situation, or they're being recruited from somebody else, and they decide to go before the school year starts. That's, you'd be ineligible now with this amendment being cleared. Questions with that? All right. I misspoke. The last amendment is the amendment for the four- and five-day school week. This other one was the boundary changes in the fall sports, so. Questions with those?
There's five of them.
Yeah. Yep. Five was your changing for your clarification for four-day, five-day school week. Amendment four was dealing with the calendar days and then also the fall at the beginning of the year. Eligibility amendment three was with... Students staying eligible if they are living in their home even though their parents basically get up and move across the street. And then two was trimester, semester with middle school students and no eighth-grade redshirt year. And then the First Amendment was dealing with high school kids on trimester semesters. So that would be those five amendments. Good amendments.
Is there a motion on how we should vote on those?
We vote yes on all five amendments.
Motion to vote yes on all five, is there a second? Chris seconded that. Any discussion on that? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye? Those both, motion's carried. We will move to item number 11, which is approve the NAPUS membership, which is the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools, of which we are one of the federally impacted schools. So it's an annual cost of $350, and they're main lobbying group for us on the impact aid.
It is interesting, just to keep you abreast of what's going on with 7002 and 7003. There hasn't been any talk about, you know, with the cuts at the federal level with 7003. But there is actually discussion going on with 7002, and that's what we receive, the largest portion of ours. So it's going to be important that we, Mulbridge Pollock stays well aware of what's going on with those dollars. And make sure you reach out to all of your folks in DC when this comes up. I'll keep you informed on that.
We need a motion to approve that membership. So we'll move motion from Travis, is there a second? Second from Levi, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those both, motion's carried. We have administration report.
That's right, I'm in right, all right.
Yeah. Business manager, have anything to?
No, I did submit a request for all of our grants on Friday. And we're finishing up our summer food program application.
Any questions for the business manager? I guess move on to yours.
Okay. Federal programs update, we had a meeting last week with Dr. Graves on Friday. It's basically one of the monthly meetings that he has. And we really don't have any information on Title I, Title II-A, our Title RLIS program. In listening to Cody Stolzer talk about it, he says that typically by this time of the year, the state has our numbers, and the state's working on figuring out what the allocations are going to be. He is still very confident that we're going to get about the same amount that we received this past year. But with that being said, it has not landed at the state level yet, so it's still in peer. Also, just want to mention that our teachers, CTE teachers, are working with the Western Statewide Consortium on their purchase orders for equipment grants. Our Perkins dollars now, as you guys know, will flow through that Western Statewide Consortium. Title 6B application has been completed. We have to just make one minor change to that application, and I'm sure that will go through. And then I'll talk about the school budget here shortly. Remind you, graduation is on Sunday, May 18th at 2:00 PM. Cody Stokes is the speaker. If you want to participate in it, it will be, I recommend you're out here about 1:45 before we go in. Policies, I will ask that we go forward tonight with the second reading and approving the GCDB policy. That's the criminal background one with fingerprinting. I had a chance to work through that policy a little bit the last couple of weeks. It's ready to be approved. There will have to be some adjustments that the school district makes in looking at our volunteers going forward as far as the fingerprint process. Now, the big thing for policies though, there's a number of policies that I posted. These policies are posted because of state laws that were passed this year. We're in a kind of a unique situation because as a school district, and I will bring these to you all in June, there's some policies that all we have to do is go in and amend ours. That means just make sure the language is changed in them to be what's in the law. But then there's also some policies that we just don't have, that now we're going to need. One of them, for example, is the graduation ceremony decoration. So that will be a policy that will be in its first reading this coming month. Now, one of the things to remember about any of these policies that relay back to law, you're fine right now in not having the policy in place as long as you follow what? The law. So it's not like you have to necessarily, even next month when we go through these other policies, it's not like you have to hammer them all through. You do have time, it's just we have to make sure that we follow the law as we go through them. As I'm speaking on this topic, I want to make sure that everyone receives this conducting public business in public. And this will be part of a requirement that I would, I will let Steve know this, that in that first July, excuse me, in the July board meeting, it would be the second board meeting, that you will want to make sure you go through this conducting public business in public. There's two laws that are very clear that one, you have to go through this, it has to be in the minutes, and then you specifically have to go through the open meetings. Or just specific, yeah, it's the open meetings law that you have to specifically go through and address. Again, it has to be part of your minutes. Do that. So that's for you guys just to look at.
This basically isn't a meeting.
Yeah, they're related.
You got this as board artifacts for quite a while, but no.
No. That's actually, that handout right there is from the attorney general's office. And in the law, it's very specific that it has to be this brochure that's shared with you guys. And that's why I gave it to you now. I'm sure Steve will do the same.
It's been around for a while, it just hasn't been since 2014.
Yeah.
No changes to the law itself, other than just that we have to officially make it part of the.
There is, there is some things in there that you have to look at with the minutes. You know, that's the part that Kim and Steve will make sure is there, so. Please look at those policies, though, before our next meeting, and I will try to get them into a draft form for first draft, and we can go from there on discussing them. And I just wanted to mention also that on April 23rd, I attended the Title VI consultation in Standing Rock with the U and Tribal Department. Chairwoman Jan Alkire was there as part of the consultation. Consultation went really well for our district. As usual, they're happy with what we're doing in representing Native American students in the district. Also, we will have the honoring of our seniors, I believe that is on Saturday here. It's in the middle school gym, and I think they're serving lunches and stuff up here. So you guys are welcome to obviously attend that. With that, do you have any questions? Any of that? No questions. Okay, so let's go through then the provisional budget. I decided, Jim worked hard on getting that budget that's posted online. There'll be just a few little minor adjustments to it. Remember, we can make adjustments on this budget all the way through till September. September, we will. We'll approve it. What this is, is this is just a cleaner, to me, it's a cleaner look for you guys instead of going through that entire budget process. It breaks down your revenues on the first page. You're going to see the total revenue for general fund revenues is $6,158,954. Capital outlay, what I want to point out about capital outlay is that you're only able to take up to that 3% role, right? You can't go, even though your valuations are much higher, you can't go any higher than that. That's why we're at the $1,069,154. Special education went out with the revenues there. You're at 1.3. Understand that you're using sped reserves at 278,837, and you really have to do that. We have to get that down, spent down a little bit lower before we're ever going to receive all of our state aid for special education. You can see what we're receiving roughly, and 7002 is probably pretty solid. You know, it doesn't change a whole lot unless federal government decides to get rid of it. The 700, 7003 revenue could change. That's all depending upon our enrollment numbers for next year as far as number of students that reside on Indian lands. You can see from the food service revenue, we're at $495,178. Notice that, again, we have to put in there $69,178 for general fund reserves. If you flip the page, obviously, you'll see that expenditures, I should put it this way, expenditures are going to match your revenues. As you guys know, with what we'll approve here later today, a lot of our changes in our expenditures really do relate to salaries, ongoing salaries, relates to retention bonuses for both certified and classified. If you look at the general fund expenditures, I put down what it is for '25, '26. I put in parentheses what it was for '24, '25. Any questions with any of the general fund expenditures? Good way to time right there for the teacher, so I'm going to move on. If you look at the capital outlay expenditures, again, this has kind of changed a little bit over the years. Obviously, this coming year, we're going to be looking at going back to your revenues part of it. We're going to be putting a lot of dollars from capital outlay into general fund to help support that. So transferring to general funds for salaries is $200,718. Then you have ongoing expenses, which would be $280,400. We designated right now $135,000 for curriculum. Now, I want to make sure I have everyone's attention when we talk a little bit about curriculum. So the principals have been doing a very good job of working through that. And this is an example how this will potentially change over the next few years just for a K through five reading curriculum. Today, we received a quote for what we want to go forward with. This is from the committee with the teachers and administration, and the quote for this is $141,682. So this is something that we have to obviously work on, the quote for this capital outlay budget to make this work. And that's one thing. And then building and grounds, you can see that that's something that keeps on growing a little bit for us as equipment breaks down and we need more equipment. And then another big one for us is technology. Shane did a great job of bringing his purchase orders forward. This is something that has really changed. Again, it's that technology is no longer about running wires, right? No longer about just a monitor in front of us. Technology now is growing quite a bit, that it's much, much larger than that. There's a lot more instruction that comes with it. And again, one of the big items is safety and security of the school. That's huge for this district. So right now, our technology budget for capital outlay is at $218,455. That does not include a lot of general fund costs that come from technology, too, when teachers want certain types of programs for their classrooms. That's another additional for technology, general fund. And you can see the rest of them there. Any questions with that? All right, I think the rest of them on here are pretty much self-explanatory. If you look down to the notes on the '25, '26 budget, these are things that I want to just make sure they, you understand where these numbers are coming from. So general fund reserve, so with this budget of nine million, over nine million, to get it so it matches, is we have to take $257,828 out of reserves. Now, understand with that, that $48,000 of that is certified from the retention bonuses. $27,000 of that is retention bonuses for ESP. So you could put that in the '24, '25 budget and then supplement your budget, right? This year, at the end of the year. Or you could just bump it actually to when you're paying it out for '20, '25, '26. Okay, that's something you guys can, you know, discuss. Another one is what we talked a little bit about with the recruitment. This is a big thing with recruiting teachers, retaining teachers and then recruiting teachers. So highlighting the $28,000, yes, we have to pay that on the front side, but we're pretty confident that we'll get part of that, a portion of that, that back. But again, some of it you will not, because when we hire teachers, we're paying things such as signing bonuses from $4,000 to $3,500 to $3,000 to get them out here. And on top of that, also offering them, what you want to call it, tuition reimbursement or, you know, housing type thing, that's $200 a month for certified teachers that we hire for 12 months. So that's where those dollars are at. So again, you pay them for a period of time, but then you get it back, you know, a year from now. Not, not get it back as far as receiving it, but it's not going to count against you. It's not an ongoing cost. Does everybody understand that? Okay, then we, looking at our budget, we'll have some changes that I think in the next month or I believe in June probably to supplement the budget. One of the things that we noticed is like with property and liability, we're way low on that. Again, I reminded you last month, I'll remind you again, that's probably something you're going to want to look at down the line, because that amount just keeps on growing. But that's a $74,000 increase in our, in our budget over the years, so. Questions?
Probably liability is probably something that every, so many years you should quote again. We just did one last year. Yeah, it's something we probably need to look at regularly. Because we've been a long time, didn't really look at it. And I know what that market's changing a lot of year to year with losses that these different companies have had, I know. Easy enough to get a quote, matter of calling people and they give you a quote. Then they ask you for a million things, though.
It's not that easy for Kim.
Yeah, I know.
She has to do a lot of work on that side of it, but.
They asked a lot of information, although it would probably be easier the second time around since we just did it, but. As far as the numbers go, as far as this year's budget, next year's budget, it's more of a numbers game. I mean, is there a reason that we move it into like this year's budget or rather than next year's budget?
I mean, if you would want it paid out this year, then we need to supplement the budget this year. It would have to be paid out before. If the intention is to be in August.
That's what I see. But unless there's a reason, is there a driving reason to move it to this year's budget?
No, there's not. It's just a, it's a perception thing, and you see school districts do it in different ways. It's all about, do you want a, perception is that you're, it's a 258 or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Thousand, or do you want it to be, you know, 180, 190? So.
Perception thing, in the end, it's the same.
Right.
I can see where some schools would want something to be in like this year's budget, if they were trying to meet some accountability, pay them or something, then it almost has to be like this year, but then you had paid out this year. But we're not running anything like that, so.
No, we've already hit our lowest month, so we're given that.
With your enrollment, with your enrollment where it's at right now and going into the future, you will be no longer at 25%. You'll be able to carry 30%. Right now, one of the things, and just talking a little bit about what we talked about in negotiations, is that when we had those conversations, we were always at about 573 with our numbers. This budget is based off of 563. So that's good.
Yeah.
And the fact that, you know, enrollment picks up like it usually does in the fall, you get, you know, 10, 15 extra kids. It's more revenue, obviously. And the other thing, keep in mind, this is also with basically your entire teaching staff filled. Budget-wise, it's, it's filled in the budget. Do we have new positions yet to fill? Yes, but the budget hasn't there, so.
Good question about, for the end of the year, are we on track to how much of the budget are we spending for this current year? Usually, we're in that 90-some percent range, aren't we? Are we getting track to do that again? I mean, we had some positions open this year.
Yeah, because you also have, remember, you also hire mentor teachers, you hire some paraprofessionals. We figured when we just, we didn't go deep dive into it, but when we ran through it, you're probably going to look at, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, $200,000 that you're going to have. And that's why, again, with this, I think you're okay.
But we're spending the majority of the budget.
Yeah, when we do the detail, we're at 84.93% of our budget. So our budget was $5,694,000. We've spent $4,836,000. You know, so 84.93%, saving 5%. You know, we have May, June, and then you expense July and August now, so we are.
You're going to be like, we'll see that.
We're in that, yeah.
Okay.
There was a large increase to the institutional part, especially that, is there an anticipated greater need to that? It doubled from last year.
Reason why I think it doubled from last year is because, let me look at it real quick. I'll put in the detail online. I think, what is it, Dustin? What's it, is it 80,000?
60,000 when you put it down to 20,000.
Yeah. I think that's very.
He keeps moving, anyone moving into the.
Another thing they did talk about, and this is a conversation Kim and I had, is that Dr. Graves informed us also that there was several schools that did not receive extraordinary cost funds. There's some concern, that he has concerns of what that extraordinary cost fund will look like in the future. Does everybody know what the extraordinary cost fund is? Take two, you have two kids that you send, that isn't even close to what we have in there. That's like one and a half kids, maybe.
You said they didn't receive it because there was no money left in it, or?
Right, okay.
How does that work then? Do they prorate it out to the eligible schools?
Well, you, it all depends on the needs of the schools, too. I mean, it gets, it gets schools that are very, very high-need schools, and they imply they're going to probably get their needs taken care of.
So this, our expenditures, curriculum, we have budget for $135,000. And then he set this quote on a K5 reading curriculum.
Yep.
We are one, obviously, that's way more than what we've been spending.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah. You know, you got to go back, you know, part of this is the changeover that we've had with technology. You and I had that conversation a little bit, is that we haven't had, had to really go on and redo entire curriculums. Well, right now, remember the Science of Reading Initiative that the Department of Education has brought forward? That has, you know, pushed schools to look at their reading curriculums. Middle school, high school, again, it's about content standards. They're able to get a lot of that covered in their present curriculum that they have. But with K through five, there's specific things that need to be touched on, and that's what this is. So we will find a way, might be that this quote has to be tweaked a little bit. You know, they can help us out, and then obviously, we'll keep on working on that capital outlay budget and massage a little bit so we can, the needs that teachers have, the administration has, to get that to fit in here, so.
How often would you guess that we have to buy a K5 reading? I mean, that's like a, every several years thing, right?
This is six years. Okay, so in the six years, what you're paying for is that this is going to cover all the curriculum items, including like the working document the kids will have, whether you want to call it workbook, whatever it is, will cover them for that period of time. Now, to get this down to where we, we need it, maybe they'll give us one for five years, you know, a quote, or for four years, whatever it is. But also, lines for future references, I would encourage you to look at moving up that amount for curriculum. And Mrs. Bachman will do a very good job, I know, of being able to match with whatever your state is doing. They have a curriculum cycle, whatever's up, you don't want to be ahead of that, that cycle, right? You want to be one year behind it. So if math is 24, 25, you don't want to be jumping on it 23, 24. You want to wait until when? 20, 25, 26, make sure you have your materials then. But that's all depending upon what discipline that you're, you're looking at for curriculum. Two of the big ones are always math and science.
Is that the only curriculum we're looking at for next year, then? Because that's really the whole budget.
But you're still going to have, for example, remember, you have, it is definitely the entire budget. So if you look at a high school, it's a little different because your. So if you look at a high school, it's a little different because you're teaching electives, right? And for electives, you're going to have teachers, and we build this into the budget, like our CTE programs. You know, they have like a $3,000 CTE budget to purchase those capital outlay requests that they may have. And we have, we do know we're going to have some of those.
Basically, you're saying your choices are either you got to make that number smaller or make your budget bigger.
Match, yeah.
Cause it's one way or the other.
Yeah, but you can't, you're not, you're not going to be able to increase the dollar amount. So you have to massage the capital outlay budget by looking at other areas where you don't necessarily, it pushes down the line another year.
Yeah.
Right? That is that.
Alright, literary budget, and then we're looking at, what year, what month does that have to be approved by?
By, it has to be approved to go to the county by October 1st. So I mean, July will have our budget hearing. You have August and September to make adjustments. And then we've got to submit to the county by October 1st. So any one year regularly.
Generally, we're August, September meetings, we're looking at final approval of that. Right? Um, my next item on my agenda is the second reading of the criminal background checks. Oh, did I miss them? Oh, is there a? Basically, questions?
If, if there's questions, you're trying to answer.
Okay. And I, you reminded me on the provisional budget, there's a time for the public to ask questions about the budget, make statements. Guess we will see if anybody has comments to make. If not, we will declare that item finished and move on to the item number 14, which would be the second reading of criminal background checks, which is the policy we have posted on there that we had our discussion about last month. And I hope to have a chance to review it. Opened up for discussion. Now, we will look for a motion to approve. I don't, I didn't really hear any comments this month about it, anything or any issues with it. If not, is there somebody who would like to make a motion to approve the criminal background checks policy? So I have a motion from Dr. Henderson, is there a second? Dr. Freed? Alright, any other discussions? Are you hearing that? All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Carried. Next on my agenda is the executive sessions for, as per SDCL 1-25-2, which are negotiations and contracts. We'll have a little discussion about the negotiations, I think, before we come out and have an item after that for approval. Is there a motion to go into the executive session?
That's a move.
Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Just going into the executive session, are we staying in here?
We'll stay.
Is it all going to this one?